Good evening, welcome to the Springford Area School District. Today is Monday, June 16th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Springford Board of School Directors believes the community has the right to bring before the board issues and concerns they may have about items on the agenda or about items in general which affect the district or their children. Because of this belief and philosophy, the board will schedule a time at the beginning and conclusion of every meeting to have an opportunity for community members to share their concerns with the board. At the start of the meeting, members from the public may comment on agenda items only. The school board will move through the meeting agenda, then at the end, when prompted, there will be a time for public comment. This meeting is being filmed to be broadcast on community cable channels and online. Individuals intending to make public comments should be aware that they are being filmed. Speakers will be asked to state their name in the area in which you reside before your comment.
Good evening, thank you for attending. Ms. Schmidt, could we do a roll call?
Tonight in person, we have Mrs. Weingarten, Dr. Sharma, Mrs. Westwood, Mrs. Dierdorf, Mrs. Hermans, Mr. Lackey, Mr. Jackson, and Mrs. Goldsmith, and, sorry, Dr. Wright are not in pred, not here.
And if, for whatever reason, they are not on Zoom, but we'll just keep an eye out for that, okay? Thank you very much. As far as announcements go, the board did meet an executive session twice, once on June 10th to discuss personnel, and once prior to this meeting to discuss personnel. Mr. Rizzo, do you have anything?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll be moving on to public to be heard on agenda items only. If there's anyone that wishes to speak, please approach the podium with your name, township of residence, as well as the agenda item for which you are referencing.
There we go. Good evening, members of the board and staff. My name is Mike Hayes, I'm from the Pottstown area. I'm here tonight on behalf of State Representative Joe Cerisi.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Can we pause the clock? I couldn't catch, what area are you from?
Oh, so I live in the Pottstown area, but I'm here tonight for agenda item number 12, on behalf of State Representative Joe Cerisi.
Okay, you work for Joe Cerisi, okay.
Yes, indeed.
Mr. Fitzgerald, I'm gonna look at you.
I believe we have an exception for community-based organizations.
So, we'll let you continue, we can start the clock. My apologies.
No, thank you, I'll be brief. Just wanted to thank you for your consideration of the renaming of the Ninth Grade Center Arboretum in honor of Gail Wellington. I did get to know Gail over the course of many years, and unfortunately, like for a lot of people in life, you don't really learn the best parts about them until after they pass away. And that was one of the things that I noted about Gail, as I read the obituary, you know, just an incredible life of service. She was a, she acted as a volunteer project coordinator at the Springford Ninth Grade Center as they were building the arboretum. Previously served on the Board of Directors for the Gallery School, and also served on the boards of the Springford Chamber of Commerce, and the Western Montgomery United Way, as well as the Occupational Advisory Council for the Western Center. She was involved with the Arts Goes to School program, and I think it would be a great, just a great act in her honor to rename the arboretum, and just wanted to thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay. All right, with that said, we'll move on to our first presentation of the night, and Mr. Rizzo will be taking the podium to discuss the overall budget process and analysis for, well, I guess at this point, the 2026-2027 school year.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about the 2026-2027 budget prep season. And just by way of reminder, we are talking about the 2026-2027 season, not the 2025-26 school year that's coming up. Before we get into that, though, I do want to do just a very basic recap on where we were. As the board knows, last month you did approve the 2025-26 budget with a 5.14% increase. And just to remind the board and the community that is listening tonight, the two primary contributors to needing to address that gap was, first, the healthcare benefits increasing, the costs increasing, and then decreasing tax revenues from commercial assessments. Those two things really helped drive up our costs. The solution that the board approved last month was using the available referendum exceptions of $1.6 million, using about $300,000 from our debt service cliff, which does, as Mr. Fink presented last month, leave us $5.2 million left available of the debt service cash remaining. And again, for the board and for the community, just a reminder, you can go back and watch that May budget presentation for more information on those three scenarios that Mr. Fink presented. So moving on, just again, for the benefit of the community, we are required, as a school district, to follow a very strict process of budget approval called the Act I of 2006 budget process. So, the timeline is up there, but just to talk very briefly through it, in September, PDE releases the Act I index for the upcoming fiscal year. October and November, our team does begin developing the preliminary budget for the next fiscal year. Proposed preliminary budget presentation is required by law, and that normally happens around November. In January, the board approves the, approves the proposed preliminary budget, and to keep our options open, any qualifying exceptions. And Springford generally, even though there are four options, Springford generally only qualifies for special education, is one of the exceptions, and I'll cover those a little bit later. In April, our goal is to have a proposed final budget presentation, and for the present, or for the budget to be posted on our website for public, for public review. And then we target May as our final budget approval, so the business office can start doing what they do prior to July 1. I do want to make sure that the board is aware, of course, and the community is aware that we have until June 30th to have it approved, but May is usually our goal. So that's the process for the business office, for the school board. Yours is a little bit different. In November, we do a presentation where we have seen, in this past year, we've seen an astronomical gap, and the question is, why does that gap exist? First, because we've not collected enough data from the current fiscal year to accurately project the next school year, the 2026-27 school year, and Mr. Fink has a tendency to budget conservatively. He'd rather start very conservatively with the numbers and then pull back, rather than us be surprised later on in the budgetary process. We then spend the next several months, from December through April, shaving down that budget. We collect more trend data, we collect more information, we see how the numbers are coming in, and that allows us to be a little bit more accurate with our, with our, with our budget projections. And again, our goal is in May to do a final presentation and approval, and then regular updates are, of course, provided at the finance committee meetings throughout the entire budget planning process. So let's talk a little bit about, as we prepare for the 2026-27 school year, what some of those future budget concerns are. First, it has been mentioned before that there are items that are within our control, and then there are items that are not within our control. Within our control are options for increasing revenue and options for reducing expenses. What is not within our control is what I had already mentioned earlier, significant commercial tax assessment appeals, as well as significant healthcare cost increases. We have no control, but we do have to plan for those. Excuse me. So, when we find ourselves in a situation when the, when the budget increases, or exceeds the Act I index, we have to do some planning, we have to have some conversations. Historically, the proposed final budget is not balanced in March and April, whenever we go before the board for that presentation and for public display. When this is the case, the districts have several options to increase revenues. There are obviously pros and cons to each option. The first option is to increase taxes to the identified index. For this upcoming budget, the 2025-26, our index was 4%. That, of course, requires board approval. The second option is to take advantage of the approved referendum exceptions, and again, for the 2025-26 budget season, that was 1.14%. We can raise taxes beyond the index without a referendum vote because of special education costs. And I mentioned there are four. Debt obligation is one of them, retirement contributions is one, other financial emergencies would be a third, but the fourth is what we qualify for, which is special education The next option is to draw funds from the unassigned fund balance, and to kind of simplify this a little bit, that's our savings account, more or less. And the problem with using the unassigned fund balance is, those are one-time funds, one-time contribution, and that does not mitigate ongoing expenses. If it does anything, it kicks the proverbial can down the road, or creates a compounding problem in the next school year without some other interventions. And then the last option is use the upcoming debt service drop-off to cover the gap. The debt service, by way of reminder, is the annual amount paid towards existing debt. So when the annual debt payment gets lower, recurring funds then become available. Spending this drop-off on regular operating expenses, however, I should caution the board, does limit the ability to borrow for future projects, for facilities, upgrades, renovations, et cetera, so we should do so sparingly. And Mr. Fink, back in May, did speak on that, and did mention, at least in one finance committee, what the, what the capacity was for using some of that for the short-term solution. In addition to considering revenue increasing measures, we also have to examine expenditures, which requires a deeper analysis of how we conduct business, which is the property programs and personnel, affectionately referred to as the three Ps. If we're going to be addressing the three Ps, there are basically, there's a two-phase solution that we have to consider. Short-term, we need to have a short-term plan to get to a long-term solution, which the board approved last month. The board did a fantastic job of buying us some time to really start planning for those long-term solutions. The short-term plan gets us through until we can get a long-term plan drafted and implemented. We utilize some cash from the debt cliff drop-off in 2025-26, and we do have some available to us as we plan for 2026-27. But again, that's a short-term solution. The long-term phase is the second part, and those require long-term solutions. And those are, simply put, review all of our existing programs and plans and make adjustments. We implement, our goal would be to implement the operational plan changes over time, beginning with the 2026-2027 school year. Efficiency analysis, so let's talk about how we're gonna get there. Efficiency analysis is one of the steps, is something that we do, but we may want to be looking at revising or modifying our process. That's an annual review of how we conduct our business, and identify ways to be more efficient and cost-effective. We can review building schedules to maximize our efficiency. Reviewing duty schedules, is there a more cost-effective way to have duties be covered? And then, of course, the three Ps. And property, are we effectively managing and maintaining our facilities? As you know, we are looking already at a reduction of one building in our discussions right now. Programs, we would review anything from our ongoing refresh plans that have been discussed to existing educational programs. As far as personnel is concerned, we would talk about how we use our staff with feedback from our building administrative, have those important conversations. Ultimately, the board does need to decide which way they would like to proceed as we get there. So then, my recommendation is that we follow a timeline of analysis. The goal is to have all this work done for the budget to be approved, once again, in May of 2026, for the 2026-27 school year. To get there, we would observe the following timeline. In July or August, our business office will generate a list of options and associated pros and cons that the board can consider in future meetings. Early in the fall, the district office staff would meet with the entire administrative team and establish where we are currently, I'm sorry, excuse me, where we are currently and what potential gaps exist. In January, the district office staff will meet with each building and department to discuss where we are, to discuss the needs and possible areas of flexibility. We would be asking very important questions. What do we need to be legally in compliance? How can we optimize our existing staff? Do we need to replace retirements and resignations? How does that impact programming for our students? Can we reassign and/or move forward without positions? Are we allowed, are we in a position where we can not bring some things back to generate some savings? Those are the types of questions that we would ask, that would be the analysis in a series of meetings that we'd go through with our team. In February, we would compile all that data, and we would share it with the board. In the February-March timeframe, our goal would be to work with the school board to make some final decisions, and communicate with the administrative team what those would be. And I think it's important to mention that there really is not going to be one solution, it's gonna be a couple of different solutions. We're gonna pick from a few different things, and that's gonna take a few years to get where we need to get. So it's gonna be multiple solutions over multiple years to get us where we need to be. We are ready to do the work, I know the board is ready to do the work, and I feel like this is the best way to proceed at this point. At this point, any questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. So before I defer to the board, I just wanna thank you, because we are on the heels of just approving the 2025-26 budget, and then for you, Mr. Fink, to be able to turn around what is the will of the board, to be able to start to have this conversation, so that we can bring the community along with us, because this is something that is different from years past, right? In that, the board typically, we don't start having these budget presentations publicly until November, but as you mentioned, that there, there are some very significant external factors that has impacted our budget, and, you know, it is the desire of this board to be more proactive and more, more forward-thinking in terms of how to address it for the long term. So thank you to Mr. Fink and you for coming forward and starting to have this conversation, because I think it's important for the community to be brought along in this. But as I go there, let me defer to the board to see if there are questions and/or comments. So, it doesn't look like there is, but I just wanna ask one clarifying question, I, you know, mostly for the purposes of, you know, all of our constituents, our parents, our staff. When we talk about, you know, going through this process, which I don't know if you wanna put it back on the board, looking at the timeline, you know, as you said, there isn't necessarily one magic item that the administration may come forward with that will, you know, address all of our budget needs. So, you know, as we think about- So, you know, as we think about, you know, potential options in the people, I'm sorry, I can never do the three Ps right. People, property, projects, programming, yes, all of them. As we start to look at the three Ps, my point being is, you know, while we're going to be talking about this and talking about this between now and when we approve the budget in May, we are not looking to make any changes to the way we operate internally until the 2627 season. So I just want to make that very clear for the community, and if there's anything that you, because I want to make sure that, you know, we do this in a way that is not blindsiding to anybody.
That is absolutely correct, and I also think it's fair to say that nothing is off the table at this point. Everything needs to be considered as we work through this, and then we'll go through a process of whittling down until we get to those solutions.
Great. Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rizzo.
Thank you.
Okay. So as we wait for Mr. Rizzo to come back to the table, we are going to turn it over to Ms. Gupta, and welcome officially Mr. Drover to the board table as our student reps. So we'll go into the June student rep report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. This is our June student rep report. I just want to take a quick moment and welcome Jason, our new junior rep. Can everybody have a round of applause for him? So this is a really big role to fill in after Stella, but I'm sure you'll do an amazing job. I'm really excited to work with you. So moving into our past events, there's a long list. We had Keystone exams administered. There was an in-service day on May 20th. There was the 16th Annual Springfield Film Festival on May 21st. I was unfortunately not able to be there, but I'm sure the event went amazing and everybody had a great time. The Western Tech Center had their award ceremony on May 21st. The middle and high school chamber orchestra performance was on May 22nd, as well as the senior commencement awards and scholarship night on May 22nd. We had Memorial Day weekend on May 26th. Happy Memorial Day to everybody, I hope. Anyone that was traveling had a safe journey, and everybody was just able to relax that weekend. And then, following after that, we had our seniors having their last day on May 27th. And then their final exams were administered from May 28th to May 30th. And then the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center had their new student orientation on May 28th, as well as the senior athletic banquet on that same night, May 28th. The music banquet ran on May 30th. The underclassmen had final exams from June 2nd to June 5th. The class of 2025 graduated on June 4th. I'm so happy that I was able to be there. It was really such an honor seeing everybody have their really big moment, and I'm excited to see everything that the class of 2025 is able to achieve in their future. And then, following that, all students had their last day of school on June 5th. And then the final day for teachers was on June 6th. And then we had the SAT administered here at Springfield on June 7th. And now I'm going to pass it on to Jason for our future events.
Thank you, everybody. For the future events, we have the summer ELD camp starting on June 17th. That is invitation-only. For the final scheduled requests for high school students, those are due tomorrow, June 18th, or, sorry, two days from now, June 18th. The district is closed on June 19th for Juneteenth. Summer orchestra camp starts on June 30th. Summer ELD starts on July 1st, invitation-only as well. The district is closed on July 4th for Independence Day. Summer band camp starts on July 7th. And first-day verification opens on August 1st. Springfield Educational Foundation Scholarship Golf Outing is on August 4th. Thank you.
All right. And then, just a few reminders, continue to read the weekly update for district-wide news. Keep up with your summer assignments, especially for high school students. You can find that on the Springfield website for any courses that you're taking this following year. All the assignments are posted, and they're organized by subject. And then, there's no work session meeting or board meeting throughout the month of July, so we'll see you again in August. And then, just, everybody have an amazing summer. I'm excited to see what, everything that happens this next year.
Great. Thank you both. And so what's going to keep you both busy this summer?
I can start. I'm actually going to Boston tomorrow, so I'm going to be staying with my sister for a week.
I'm going to be working as a lifeguard for most of the summer, so hopefully that'll keep me busy.
Great. Well, we look forward to seeing you back in August, and make sure you enjoy your time off. Great. Thank you both. Moving on to community relations, Mrs. Weingarten?
Thank you very much. The community relations committee met on June 11th. This was the first time we met since April. So there was quite a bit of information to cover. Ms. Crew provided an end-of-the-year update and metrics from RCTV, reviewing the increase in viewership this year and discussing goals for the upcoming school year. Mr. Rothemel plans to explore new streaming platforms like Roku and Amazon TV, so that's exciting. Ms. Crew went into an extensive first-year review about Parent Square. And if you are a user of Parent Square, I hope you love it as much as I do, although I'm getting the tail end of it with only one more student left in the district. She polled parents and shared those updates, both the pros and the cons, and plans to use the feedback to make improvements over the summer. She also reviewed the past events that the communications department planned, organized, and covered. And it was, as you could see by our student update, that list was tremendous. And with that, we owe Ms. Crew and her team a tremendous, tremendous thanks. I mean, just to name a few, the athletic awards, academic recognition, choral performances, the Springfield 5K, Special Olympics, Honor Society, Impact Awards, Film Festival, and of course, graduation. I believe it might have been a record, there were about 650 students that walked at graduation in less than 90 minutes. So, I mean, that in itself was incredibly impressive. And as a parent and a board member, I'm really incredibly grateful for all of the work that went into making those events so fantastic and incredibly memorable for the students. So the summer projects, we moved on to summer projects, and the summer projects led to an item that you will see on the agenda this evening for the Upper Providence Elementary School AV upgrade. This planned project is part of Mr. Rothemel's multi-year elementary school upgrade project. This summer, he will address the needs at Upper Providence and Oaks Elementary Schools. The Oaks project will be covered by EITC funds, and the Upper Providence project will be covered by capital funds. The Upper Providence project includes projector installation and wiring, new speakers and installation, new wireless microphones, new amplifier for system, controllers on the gym side and cafe side for room audio designation. So you'll see that on the agenda. And finally, we were pleased to learn that the communications team was again recognized by the National School Public Relations Associations for three projects this year. Those projects are an award of merit for the Springfield RamCast Journey Through Our ELD Program, an honorable mention, Sun, Moon, and Mr. Landis April 8th Eclipse Discussion. I think all of you have seen that, it's so great. And an honorable mention for the last week in Springfield. So congratulations to this team and the creativity, and everyone who worked on those projects, we're incredibly proud of you. Our next meeting is October 7th in the district office. Any questions? Thank you very much.
No questions. Nope, no questions. I was just going to echo what you said, which was fabulous job to our RCTV group, mighty group of lesson five that covers all that at the end of the year for our community. So job well done, as always. Moving on, I just want to make one comment because I'm noticing here for our public-facing agenda that it does state extracurricular committee members, but for the community, the committee members residing on the community relations is Mrs. Weingarten's chair, and Dr. Sharma, and myself. So just a quick update. All right. Moving on to policy, Mr. Rizzo will be taking that.
Yes, thank you. The policy committee met on Wednesday, June 11th at 6:00. And the results of that meeting were policies 107, 112, 906.1, and 910 were discussed and will be sent to the solicitor for review, and hopefully will be on the August board agenda for a first reading. Policies 113 and 113.3 have been sent to the solicitor and will be brought back to the committee in September for further consideration. And then policies 109 and 122 were reviewed, and there were no recommended changes, so the review date will be updated to reflect the date of the committee meeting. The next meeting for policy will be Monday, September 8th, 2025. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Any questions on policy? Okay. Moving on, Mr. Lackey?
Thank you. Curriculum and Technology met on Wednesday, June 11th. There were a number of items discussed. For curriculum, Dr. Gardi provided information about the 2526 district assessment calendar. Dr. Gardi also provided information about a new RamQuest resource called Penda that will bring digital science resources for grades three and four, providing interactive activities and assessments that are aligned to the PA-Steels standards. That's in part to our own Mr. Laurie, who won this subscription while attending a Steels Expo. Dr. Reinheimer and Mrs. Angelucci provided curriculum department highlights for science, ELD, English, and math. Dr. Gardi provided information related to professional development. Dr. Gardi also provided information about future curriculum reviews for personal finance, computer science, American Sign Language, technology education, honors biology, AP macro and microeconomics, and AP psychology. For technology, Dr. Hill provided information about a title change from software specialist to education system specialist. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, September 8th at 7:00 PM in the district office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lackey. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Westwood, finance?
Good evening. The finance committee met on, I'm missing the date, June 10th in the district office. We discussed ongoing business, so our executive monthly reports, and these numbers are all through May 31st, 2025. For liquidity, we have 85.5 million cash on hand. For revenues, assessments are down, affecting real estate interim tax revenue. Interest earnings remain strong. For expenditures, everything is in accordance with the plan, with the exception of health benefits, which we've discussed on many occasions if you've attended some of our meetings. For assessments, we gained approximately 500 K since our meeting in May. Real estate and transfer taxes are slowing. We are likely to be approximately 300 K short of our annual target. Also, if you've attended our meetings, Mr. Fink has been talking about this, so this was expected. Earned income tax still strong, we're approximately 250 K increased from prior year. We're pacing at 14.8 million for year-end. Self-funded health insurance, and Mr. Rizzo also just brought this up, but we're pacing around 1.5 million over budget projection. Food service, we closed the year out at, well, we not closed the year out yet, sorry, these are through May. 843 K meals served year-to-date. Reimbursable meal sales are strong, but à la carte sales continue to weaken. We went into new business, we discussed assessment appeals. We have two settlements. One is for 1122 Longford Road, one is for the Arcola Road Campus. These are on the agenda that we'll talk about in a bit. Food service worker hours increased one hour for two employees due to increased volume at the 10th through 12th center, also on the agenda tonight, as are the software, some of the software applications. So we have CLEAR, Arbiter Pay, and H2 Pass. CLEAR helps determine if enrolled students are Springfield residents. So if you think about if we have folks in the district potentially attending that aren't residents, the software will help us find those students and ensure that they are in the correct district. Arbiter Pay is a payment software for officials, and then H2 Pass is an online ticketing platform to replace Ticket Spigot, which we currently use. We discussed the business office restructuring, which is also on the agenda. Mr. Fink referenced the board memo, which hopefully everyone had a chance to read. This, the memo and some of the insights evaluated the last 10 years of the department. At a high level, we're phasing out or proposing to phase out a clerical position and introducing an accounting manager position. The job description is on our agenda for this evening. This was also discussed as helping with succession planning as we think about the future and some of our senior roles in that department. For transportation, we're working on supplemental agreement to fill some of our gaps. I talked about some of the things that we're going to discuss today and vote on. Our next meeting will be held September 9th at 6:00 PM in the district office. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Rizzo, go ahead.
Yeah, and just for the benefit of the board, when you get to the finance section, the S2 ticketing software, and there was a technology snafu within the 24 hours of the agenda. So we discovered it within the 24 hours, so we did not get that added in. We'll have that in for the voting meeting next week.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Westwood? Okay. Section F is property, and, I'm sorry, Mr. Fink, do you have a comment? Okay. So moving on to section F, property. Mr. Jackson's not here, however, he informed me that he will give his update next week. So we'll move on to, not the MCIU, as Dr. Wright is not here, so we can also put that on the agenda for next week. So we'll move on to Dr. Murray and Dr. G for the assistant superintendent report.
Good evening. I only have one item for my report tonight. Extended school year. The purpose of extended school year services for special education students is to prevent significant regression of skills during school breaks, particularly over the summer. ESY is designed for students who are at risk of losing critical academic, social, and behavioral skills without continued instruction. This year's extended school year starts on July 1st and runs through July 31st from 9:00 to 1:00 at the 5600 Flex Building. Currently, we have approximately 240 students in district who will participate in our program. These services help maintain progress towards IEP goals and support long-term educational success. So we're looking forward to another year. That is the end of my report.
Good evening. Although the summer has begun, the administrative team has already been busy at work preparing for the start of the next school year. Last week, our administrative team at three times wants to participate in an MTSS administrator training, where the focus was on preparing and supporting systems within the building and promoting a data-driven culture. Another session was a work session to begin developing a common walkthrough form as part of our comprehensive plan. And our third session was one of 15 data sessions being held throughout the summer and school year. I'd like to take a minute to thank our district data team for their preparation of the series. Throughout the year, I've met with the team of administrators roughly every two weeks to discuss data, and more importantly, how to transpose that data into actionable steps. The professional development sessions that we refer to as the administrative data series was a product of that team's work. The focus is on providing timely professional development as the various data points are being released. Each building administrator is currently building, working on building, data-driven building goals to support the overall comprehensive plan. I just wanted to wrap up by wishing our staff, students, and families a wonderful summer and a well-deserved break, and that's my report.
Thank you both. Any questions or comments? Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald, solicitor's report.
Yes, and good evening. Just briefly, we both had the presentation tonight of Mr. Rizzo and Mrs. Westwood noted two assessment appeal settlements that are on the agenda. About a week and a half ago, I met with my colleague, Dave Comer, in my office, who works with Mr. Fink surrounding many of the taxpayer-initiated assessment appeals. And I had suggested that he might want to interface with you, the board, at some time in the early fall, seeing that come August 1st, you get another round of assessment appeals on a yearly basis, just to provide what is a trend, and not just here in Springfield, but generally throughout the region, in terms of these more aggressive initiated appeals at this point with regard to commercial properties. I think it would be helpful, as the budgeting process does start earlier, that you have that information. So that might be something we think about in September or October.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I'll let Mrs. Westwood kind of own that in terms of if that's something we want to do in finance or, you know, in the board.
It's a privileged discussion with us, so that can probably be done in exec.
In executive? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Fitzgerald? Okay. Moving on, we'll go through the voting portion of our meeting for next week and see if there are any questions or comments. Section six minutes. Section seven, personnel. I will make one comment, and I'm looking for which letter it is because I'm working on paper here. Maybe I should look in terms of my online version. But I do want to bring to the community's awareness that next week, we will have an action item on our agenda. As the community is aware, you know, Mr. Rizzo is retiring, and as we've communicated and has been communicated- and has been communicated through updates by the district, the board has undergone a search for an interim superintendent. And again, this is an interim superintendent to play the role of superintendent upwards of the, you know, entire 2526 school year as we search for a permanent successor. The board has taken steps to start looking into that process of, you know, what approach, you know, we may want to take as we look to do that. But I do want to make the community aware that over the last few weeks, the board has met to do interviews with a handful of qualified candidates that has been screened by our solicitor and our director of HR, and we have made the decision, and I'm looking at Mr. Rizzo to make sure this is on the agenda.
No, it's on the agenda. So it seems like it's in a strange place, because it's a personnel-ish thing.
It's not in a personnel section.
But it's an independent contract, you tend to put those in the finance section. But it is there.
Well, I'm still going to mention it now, even though, since I'm already halfway through this whole, that the board is looking to approve John Sandville, who is the current superintendent of the Unionville Chad's Board School District, who is currently, who is currently in that position but set to retire at the end of the school year. He is looking to accept the position of interim superintendent, so on the agenda, the community will see that name for next week. Mr. Fitzgerald, anything you want to add?
Nothing more than, and I think you mentioned it, it will be an independent contract arrangement. So it's for, at most, a one-year period, but it's flexible to whatever is the needs of the district during this time period of transition.
Thank you. Sorry, I jumped the gun. Any other questions with personnel? Hopefully, what is personnel-related items? Okay, Mrs., okay, I'll pause and see if Mrs. Deardorf can find it.
For letter G regarding the change with the crossing guards, is that pretty much a seamless transition as far as with the new company that will be managing that as far as salary or a payment for the crossing guards?
I believe so. However, Chief Boyer has been the one handling this transition with the new company. He has assured me that it'll be a seamless transition.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Deardorf. Any other questions or comments on personnel? Okay, moving on to Section eight, finance. I'll give it a minute. Yes, double I is where the contract for John Sandville is, so that is where that resides.
Just a question for, I think this is for you, Dr. G. The reason there's so many of these is because we're starting the new year. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because it seemed like a lot, but I thought that's what it was last year, just checking.
Many of them are for ESY this summer, as well as school year.
Thank you. Moving on to property, again, we did not have Mr. Jackson's update, but I think many of us were in attendance at the property meeting, and if there are additional questions, we have Mr. Pellegrin in the back. Programming and curriculum. Conferences and workshops. Section 12, business. Do we not have any for first read this month?
We do not. We only talked about one policy last month.
That's amazing. Okay, you're right, we only talked about the one policy, so that's it. Okay, so we only, go ahead.
For letter B, the renaming of the Memorial Arboretum, I wanted to thank Mr. Hayes for coming to thank us and speak so highly of Ms. Wellington. I believe her family is here as well. Representative Cerise had, you know, reached out a couple times, and I know it's kind of a funny story, probably he's been wanting to do this for a long time. And from what I understand is that Gail said, "No, that's what you do," after somebody passes away, and she didn't want it done. But she had kind of started coming terms to allowing that towards the end, and I'm sorry that we weren't able to get the process moving, you know, while she was still with us. But I think I only met her once in my tenure as a school board director and community member, but anytime her name is brought up, such wonderful things about the impact that all of you have had on the district have been brought up. So I just want to, you know, extend my condolences and, you know, thank you for everything that your family has done for the district.
That's a lovely sentiment, Mrs. Deardorf. Thank you for making that comment. All right. Informational items. We talked about the PSA, PSBA Delegate Assembly. And remind me, we have Mrs. Westwood that is showing interest. Has anyone else? Okay, so me and Mrs. Westwood for now, and we'll keep it at that. Is it, and that will be, is that being voted on this month? Does that need to be voted on?
I think we do. Last year, we didn't. We just appointed, if there was not more than three, then we didn't have to vote. We're allotted three spots. Mr. Fitzgerald?
No, I believe that's correct.
Okay, great, then no need to take any action. All right. And then that takes us to board comment. Any board comment?
I would just say that also in informational is the code of conduct for elementary, elementary, middle school, high school. Those are, links were provided in the board memo, so if you wanted to access those to review, you could certainly do that.
Thank you. And I will just take a moment to thank Mrs. Deardorf in advance, as next week I will not be in attendance, at least in person. I'm hoping to maybe be able to get access on a plane to be able to vote. I don't know. We'll see. I'm not making any promises. I will be over the Arctic, so I don't know that internet access will be reliable, but we'll see. And so I want to thank you in advance for leading the meeting next week. Okay, all right. No, I will hand that to Mrs. Deardorf. All right, so with that said, we will go on to public to be heard. If there's anyone that wishes to speak, please approach a podium with your name and township of residence. Thanks. No one's approaching the podium. Motion to adjourn?